Thank you. The White River Township Planning Commission meeting is called to order. Julie is our recording secretary tonight. If you would please do a roll call for Julie.
Yep, Bob Higgins.
Here.
Don Klein.
Here.
Karen McLean.
Here.
Craig Harris.
Here.
Marissa McGlue.
Here.
Patty Sargent.
Yes.
Susan Lloyd.
Yes.
And our zoning administrator, George DeFrank.
Here.
Okay, you have the agenda before you?
No, we don't.
No.
No.
I'm talking to the planning commissioners. There were copies of the agenda back there.
There's still copies back there.
Share, share. I don't have a copy. Escape all the way. Anyway, welcome, everybody. As you can tell, I'm a bit anxious, a bit irritated that we're going to try and conduct a meeting here in a very crowded room. This is just a regular planning commission meeting. And so while, there'll be public comment at the very end. So if you could keep, you're talking to a minimum because Julie's way at the end of the table there and she needs to keep track of all of us. Okay? So, thank you. So, the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Please second.
Bob, second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, agenda is adopted. Okay, we have actually February, two meeting minutes in February. And I'm going to ask for someone to amend the agenda to include the March 20th meeting minutes, please. Will someone do that?
I'll move to include the March 20th meeting minutes.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have now amended the agenda to include the March 20th meeting minutes.
Well, we already proved it, so we don't have to do that again, do we?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, we did it. Okay, February 21st meeting minutes.
I vote to approve as written the February 21st meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the February 21st, 23 meeting minutes for the planning commission. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We have approved the February 21st planning commission meeting minutes. That's cremation. February 27th.
I'll move to approve the 27th February meeting minutes.
Done. It's been moved and seconded to approve the February 27th meeting minutes. Oh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, we have approved the February 27th planning commission meeting minutes. March 20th meeting minutes.
I move we accept these as written.
Thank you.
I'll support.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the March 20th, approve the March 20th planning commission work session meeting minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We have approved the March 20th, 2023 planning commission work session meeting minutes. Thank you. Patty, tell us what you can about correspondence from Eagle and all the building that wants to be done in Critical Dune and high-risk erosion.
Well, I have heard that there is some logging going on on Valley Road and the Meskeen County erosion people have...
Soil conservation?
Yeah, they've said okay. Robbers and those guys.
And is that in Critical Dune?
Yes. The reason it's okay, they said, and this was Meskeen County that approved it. I will say that I don't remember reading the Eagle thing, but I went in depth and read the Meskeen County. They said it's okay to cut down trees as long as you don't pull up the stumps or remove the stumps. So you can't disrupt the earth.
So Meskeen County is interpreting what Eagle requires?
For me to know what they're thinking would be a stretch.
Okay, but we don't have...
I only know what I have on the paper.
Okay, can, George, can, we need to look into that because, I mean, we have this problem all the time with Meskeen County departments approving things or Eagle not knowing about it, or vice versa. So we need to have the law before. And we need to have it on file so if any problems come up in the future, we have a bona fide record of who approved what. Okay. Thank you, Patty, for following up on that. Patty and George? Got it?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. What was that road?
Valley. It's at the very north end of our township, right on the commission. It actually...
It's in one of the...
You go down Flower Creek and then there's Valley Road and it goes to the north and it, the end of it is in Oceana County.
You actually have to go in Oceana County to get back in.
Oh, but it's in...
Yep.
I don't know what you're...
Right.
Soil conservation district says okay. And they think it's okay because they're not, at this point in time, pulling the stumps, which is kind of weird because why would you cut down the trees?
Unless you're just logging.
To log.
Yeah.
Okay. And that is really highly restricted in Critical Dune.
That's a beach climax forest in there.
It's still in Critical Dune?
I don't know if it's in Critical Dune.
I'm very confident it is.
It's a beach climax forest if you ever drive through there.
And we have other beach, what did you call it?
It's a climax.
Climax, of course. Yeah, we have in Critical Dune. So that is a, the tree type is a climax tree. Doesn't mean it's not in Critical Dune.
Right.
Okay. And it might be lovely to log, but...
I'm sure maybe.
But when you let one person do that, it's a little risky. And also, there would be limited amount of heavy equipment in roads that would get along with the trees. Okay. That's it?
There was a special use that was approved by the township board for the Taylors on Beach Ridge. They're getting real close to disaster with the erosion on the dune and where their house is placed. So they're going to be putting a steel wall down in front of the beach. And they're going to stay away from the neighboring properties. And they're going to hopefully stop the erosion so that they don't lose their house down the hill.
Okay, and as I recall, Eagle gave them a special exception and checked with the township board to see if that was okay. So it's not a special use, it's a special exception?
That's correct.
To a joint permit?
Eagle gave them permission, but our township requires that they not only get Eagle permit, they also have to get a special exception from the township. So that, because what we do is we require that neighboring properties on Lake Michigan know what's going on.
Know about it.
Yeah.
And, okay. All right. Thank you, Patty. That was a long process for you to gain.
Yes.
Many years and events, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. George? I'm sorry, sir?
I'm done.
Yep. George? Enlighten us, please.
Just two things that we should be aware of. I did get in contact with the gentleman in Dunewood who got approval from Eagle to build a garage. I got the call from the builder today. I returned the call, didn't speak to him. But that will require a recite plan return, which is what I intend to tell him, okay? The other thing is I had a conversation with Troy today, talking specifically about foundations being placed under existing structures.
Yep.
And he and I are trying to work out exactly what our process ought to be. One concern I have is that we really don't have anybody who does a consistent tour or review of the township to identify any activity. And that's how the ones that threw up on Minor. And there's been numerous concerns about the same effort going away on Clark Street in San Juan. But he and I are addressing it. We'll come back with a proposal as far as what we should do.
Okay. And I thought we were done with the Clark Street?
We are, but somebody raised a concern.
Okay, you're following up on the concern. Great, thank you. Okay. Patty wants to get us signed up for some training.
I do, I do. I did not talk with Nathan today because Williamson Works said that they would provide us with some training, not only for planning and zoning, but for ZBA, which is Zoning Board of Appeals. So we're going to talk with them and see if we can get something arranged. There's also some training that's available through MTA, which is Michigan Township Association. And that could be online training. So what I need for people to do is actually talk to me so that I can get them in touch with classes. And the last month, we did approve up to $1,000 for training for planning commissioners and for zoning board of appeals. So, and we have a lot of new members that have not gone through any training. I think it's...
Yeah, and so are we talking now about, last month, we talked about doing the Michigan Township Association training and getting, upgrading the township's membership.
It doesn't make sense to upgrade the township's membership right now because we would have to renew it again at the end of June. So right now, through the end of the month, all the classes are 50% off for anybody that is MTA member. And we are...
Okay. So what you're suggesting is that we go two paths? That we, if we, if any of us as individuals want to sign up for MTA class, see you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or at least talk to me so that I can know what you're thinking and I can give you the information about the classes. I can print that off today.
Okay, I handed out a printout, I think, last meeting of MTA classes. Did I actually hand them? No, I entitled it. Okay. And then Patty's going to follow up with Williamson Works about setting up a development to come here and do a presentation type thing.
Right.
Okay.
And I need to know from members what time of day is the best. We could also record it on Zoom. And then, but then you don't get the, you don't know what you don't know until you know you don't know it. And once you know you don't know it, then you want to ask questions.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's true.
So would you, would you like people to take a piece of scrap paper and write down their availability and what their preferences are?
Yeah, what time of the day would be the best? And then I can check with Nathan to see if he's available at that time of day and which day of the week is the best? So that we can maybe get Nathan in here and, or his associate that does the training. And I think planning and zoning and ZBA could actually more, you know, they're so closely related. And it's all about our ordinance book.
So we have funding to do some MTA trainings right now in San Juan. And those would all be individual and they would be virtual. They'd be online, so you can do them at your, at home, on your own.
Or you could, you know...
And tie them on and get together with a couple of other people. We have to be careful of creating a forum.
Yes. You could do two at a time.
This half of the table and...
Well, we have some young, young members coming on that they probably worked during the day, so maybe an early evening if we can, better.
I know. That's what I was thinking. That's why I want to get that time, because they're not all retired like me.
So you need to hear from ZBA members, too?
Yeah.
So you're going to send out an email to Patty?
Okay.
ZBA members?
I think most of them are here tonight.
Okay. Well, respond, how about if we respond by email to Patty instead of writing it on scrap of paper?
Sounds good.
Okay. We can have that on... Okay, any other thoughts on P and Z training before we even have? Okay, so yesterday, we had our proudly final session with Nathan over zoning ordinance amendments, at least in regards to solar. So I did hear, you know, we had a question about why it was changed in the decommissioning escrow. It was changed from a certain dollar amount per kilowatt to a minimum dollar amount. And Nathan and I worked it out. It comes out about the same for the size of utility scale power that would be allowed. So it's just a leaner, cleaner way of writing it. And it gets revised every five years. And also, it could be a greater amount than that. So I hope that satisfies our questions.
So that is the minimum?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and the other question that we needed was there are two lines that are used as a placeholder in the talk about prime farmland maps. I'm trying to find the page.
We have it here.
Okay, page two, on page two. Okay, Nathan is still looking for the correct citation for that. So he is well aware of it and it adds up 1:30 today. He has not been able to find it. But we will have that. Okay. Now, that's, that is all the, that's the only ones I remember from yesterday that we needed some sort of...
I've got one more, Sue. My notes from talking about the question Bob brought up on page 13 about the word will versus shall.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, Nathan did say that Cliff is reviewing that. Okay? So the next step is Cliff and Nathan are putting together a proposed set amendment that will be published. And it will be available for review before the public hearing. So we don't have it right this moment, but...
Published, printed, or published online?
Published online. It'll be available on the website, the township's website. And people could buy a copy from the office.
And it would be downloadable and printable from whiterevertw.com.
Okay, so...
Sue, excuse me, I have one other question.
Yeah.
It might be a mute point, but if you read the proposed ordinance, there are, I think, a discrepancy between two statements. In one case, they reference 600 feet from every property line. And in the other case, they reference 300 feet from the property line.
Okay, I know where the 600 is. Tell me where the 300 is.
The 300 is on page 13. And it may be a mute point, but I do think we just ought to ask the question for consistency.
All right, so it's right here. And it says there's going to be a topographic depiction of all adjacent to neighboring properties showing the location and type of all buildings within 300 feet of the lot or parcel on which a proposed utility scale solar energy system will be located. This depiction shall include the locations and elevations of all proposed utility scale solar energy system components and parts. I think it's just a picture.
Yes.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. My only point would be to just ask Nathan the question, is that inconsistency acceptable from his perspective?
Okay.
Because in one point, we talk about 600 feet specifically to property lines. In the next case, we talk 300 feet specifically to property lines.
Well, yeah, the topographic map, it's part of the evidence.
No, I understand.
Yes, okay.
I'm just asking the question.
And I think that that is a holdover from before.
It may well be.
Thank you, George.
Just clarify which one it should be.
I will ask him tomorrow. I know a caller.
Telephone.
I'm wondering.
I'm getting it.
Can't find it.
There it is.
There it is.
That's all. Um, okay. Thank you, George. Well, I would, I would entertain a motion to do two things. Direct Nathan and Cliff to prepare a publishable proposed zoning ordinance amendment based on the changes we just talked about. And secondly, to set the public hearing date.
I'll move to discuss with Cliff and Nathan the changes that we just discussed, which is the changes are the 600 versus 300 feet. I don't remember.
Changing the word will, will, and shall.
Shall.
Putting that in. Putting in the correct map reference and providing a map. And I guess there's just three.
Yes.
It was just an explanation of why that was changed per kilowatt.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll, I'll move to approve the proposed agenda, not agenda, the amendments with those corrections.
Let me pass this down, March 16th, 2023 draft.
Okay, well, I have it, so it's draft without all the changes.
This means we need to be able to do that. We need that heading.
All right, I'll give you the heading. Please do.
It's a March 16th, 2023, and that's where we're working from.
Okay. You can. I think it's the one that I gave you yesterday.
So it's been moved that the planning commission approved the version two, March 16th, 2023 amendment to the White River Township zoning ordinance regarding solar panels, solar energy systems, and related uses and matters with the clarification of the map referred to under prime farmland, the changing, resolving the issue of will or shall, and the resolving the issue of 300 feet on the map versus 600 feet required for location. Anybody care to second that, and then we can discuss it?
I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment? Okay. Julie, want to do a roll call for this one, please?
Bob Higgins?
Aye.
Don Klein?
Aye.
Karen McLean?
Aye.
Craig Harris?
Aye.
Marissa McGlue?
Aye.
Patty Sargent?
Aye.
Susan Lloyd?
Aye.
Okay, we are going to await the finalizing of all the wording and getting the map ready. And Patty will communicate with our attorney, Cliff Bloom. And then it will be published on the website, ready for our public hearing. I'll entertain a motion for setting a public hearing.
What time would you like to start?
6:30.
Okay. I will move to put a public hearing for the planning commission approval of the amendment to the White River Township zoning ordinance regarding solar panels, solar energy systems, and related uses and matters for April 18th at 6:30.
I'll second that.
Oh, I want to add one more thing.
Sure.
I want it to be at the Montague High School auditorium.
And who's on there? Is Karen? Karen seconded that. Any discussion?
That's also our regular meeting, so we will have...
Um, I put in a, okay. Uh, all in favor say, oh, I'm sorry, any discussion on that? I don't think there was. Okay.
I have a question. Penny, did you just say that we would also be conducting regular meetings starting that time?
We're certainly going to try.
All right, very good.
Probably at.
Yeah, we'll have the public hearing first.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to miss regular meetings if there's always something.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
Bring it, Nancy. Okay, all in favor of setting the public hearing for the proposed zoning ordinance amendment we just discussed for Tuesday, April 18th at 6:00 PM at the Montague High School Auditorium, say aye.
Aye.
All in both names? Okay. We're going to set that as soon it will be published in the Whiterever Beacon? Probably.
You want it to go in the beacon?
Yes.
How many people read beacon? All right, it'll be in the beacon. How many people go to M Live?
That's interesting.
Ah, it's a crapshoot. Oh, thanks, John. You want to get a little? It's a couple hundred bucks, yes, to put it in the paper.
Yeah.
It will be put in the paper.
Could you try and get it put in the Chronicle? It's a big issue.
Um, yes, yes, I mean, we can.
Usually we do put things in the Chronicle and on M Live, and if everybody would just go to M Live or the Skeetin Chronicle, that's where it'll be, all right?
We won't put it in the beacon. Well, M Live is our local record.
And M Live goes on and on and on and on. The beacon, you get it once. The M Live, you get it a lot.
Every time you go to look.
It's the low-ho for that one.
Okay, it's going to be published in M Live. And then if you forget the date, you can go back and look it up online. You don't have to go to the woodshed. You got the old favorites. Um, transitional open space zoning amendment update. I put that on the agenda and I, but, um, I have not done any more work since COVID and et cetera to have her back from a seat and telling about whether they would be able to.
Sue, I'd like to discuss whether we can do that in two pieces.
Okay.
The commorze property is defined. Um, I understand the wanting to look at the other properties that, uh, aren't in effect in the plume. That's already been, that's outlined. But that may drag on as, as things do, not of our fault, but because that's the way life goes. And I don't have any magic ball or any inside line on, uh, whether to get it done now for the commorze property, but I think it's important that we get it done now for the commorze property.
Um, that will require, um, getting Cliff to, um, produce the publishable. And, um, do we think we can take you back that with, uh, the zoning ordinance published here?
Oh, sure, why not?
Yeah, honestly, why not?
Why not?
Yeah.
We'll save a little money.
Well, we'll save a lot of money.
Yeah.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars. Okay.
This will require Cliff to publish one.
Um, we've already approved it, the language and everything at a previous meeting and the boundaries at that meeting, so I can just go ahead and ask Cliff to get it ready and.
That'd be great.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion to include this, uh, in our April 18th public hearing?
I'll do that. Um, I move that we include a zoning change for the entirety of the commorze property that lies within Whiterever Township to be rezoned to transitional open space. And that, that, uh, should we stop there? Can we, should I, can I add the hearing?
Yeah, add the hearing.
Okay.
Well, we've already done that first part.
Okay, and that.
At a previous meeting. We just need to set the public hearing.
Okay, and that the public hearing for that, uh, rezoning occur on April 18th at the same time that we have a public hearing for the solar order. I'll support. Thank you.
All in favor of adding a public hearing for the already adopted by the planning commission transitional open space zoning amendment for the commorze property to Tuesday, April 18th, public hearing night, say aye?
Right.
Aye.
All in both names? Okay, Julie, we are.
The first thing on the agenda is that two things.
Quink toss, or are you suggesting we put it first?
Well, obviously, the one that quotes controversial and the other.
Yes.
I would propose that.
Okay, it's going to be on, on first.
Yeah, first, the kind that's open space on Tuesday, Friday, Monday.
That changes our zoning map too, so I'll have to ask Cliff if we need to put that, make that part of the public hearing.
Well, you don't want to do that until it's approved.
True, so that might be a second step.
True.
So we have to prove it, and then we hope we have another public hearing.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it is less controversial.
But it's less by one.
Yeah.
One more public hearing. Okay. All righty, well, yay. Don has presented, uh, Don has copies for us of, um, a sample of bylaws. The, uh, and I'll, I'll let you talk about it, Don, just as well. Don has copies for us to review for, um, not for direct adoption right now tonight, but as part of our review. Thank you.
When I did the research online to try to find, uh, examples of bylaws of townships, as I explained last time, it is one was from Michigan State, but that was far too extensive. I think it's built as a catch-all for everything, including from small townships to large cities. So I pretty well missed out on that one. It's being, uh, too, too extensive. So then I looked more and found this one called the Charred Township Union Planning Commission. And that is down to five pages rather than the 50. And it kind of fits our needs, so we could plagiarize this as much as we can. Move some minor adjustments or terms of law. I suggest that everybody review that and at future reading, we can start discussing how we want to modify it, if at all, and then use that as our basis for our bylaws. We make standard, delete some of whichever we want. That's that portion. And the other one was basically Township Plan Act of 1959, which I still under, and this is what dictates to us that we have to do this sort of thing along the development and contain our master plan.
Um, this was, wasn't this superseded in 2006?
I did not see that one. Oh, what?
Yeah. They, they put, um, a bunch of municipalities, like, together.
Yes, I'll do some more research. I'll see if I can find it.
Yeah, oh, here, I tell you what. Which I borrowed from somebody. Which bag is it in? Oh. 2020 edition.
Yeah, that's why I didn't look.
I had to look.
That's not in reasons.
Yeah. Well, the two, there's, there's, um, 2006 and 2008. They both apply to us.
Okay. I'll look at both of them.
Yeah. And because that is something that in our, uh, when we revise the master plan, we need to change the enabling, the paragraph about enabling legislation to those 2006, 2008 acts, state acts. Um, are you stretching?
I am.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. She raised her hand and not. Um, so, um, next, next month at our extremely long meeting, um, please, uh, take time to look over these, um, bylaws and mark them up. If you have a chance to individually look at other, maybe even neighboring townships, um, their bylaws. Also, we have bits and pieces of instructed material in both the zoning ordinance and the master plan, so we want to make sure that the zoning ordinance, the master plan, and our bylaws are in agreement. So when you're reviewing, um, the sample that Don just gave us in a little comparison with the little sections within the zoning ordinance too, okay? The master plan, we're rewriting anyway, but I got to keep that in mind. Okay, well, we have in no time arrived at, unless, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'll ask more discussions. Anything else on bylaws, anybody? Oh, the public comment portion of the evening, and I believe there was a sign-up list. We need a parting of the ways back there. We need that doorway open. Thank you. Thank you for having that up. We need, uh, okay, go ahead.
Well, I make the motion that we roll the public comments to be first.
Okay. What? Is there a support?
Bob's supportive.
Bob's supportive. It's been moved and seconded that we limit public comment to three minutes per individual, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All in both names? Okay, we are going to limit public comment, y'all, to three minutes per individual. And Bob, uh, Don is our timekeeper, so if you hear Don's voice, it means that you're either real close or you got to wrap it up. Okay, Julie, we'll call the names from the list, and after we've used the list, we will ask if anybody else wants to talk, okay?
The first page was the one with the correction of the date, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, so, um, oh, good, it's indicated here, Whiterever Township resident. Okay, I don't have to ask that. Uh, Ed Kaminski?
I'm here.
Come up here, yeah. Wherever you're at, you can go back to your chair.
No, I want to say that it, it's something that we put in the beacon. We have already, uh, said pretty much what we want to say. It's a open situation that needs to be clearly understood by all, modified to the extent possible, probably control away. I suppose we'd love to have it. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, thank you.
William Podge?
You know, I have a couple questions. Obviously, this has been out in the public for quite some time. Uh, being here and moving here recently, I mean, the reason we moved here was because of the scenic, the beauty, the things that this township offers. And I'm not sure the advantage of having a solar farm here in our township is going to be advantageous for us down the road. I don't know what the benefit is for a local resident from having this. Is there anything that we as the, as a, uh, resident of the township, is there anything we gain from them, you know, putting all of these solar panels out there in their fields? Apparently, there's only nine owners that have, obviously, are selling their properties for this, for these solar farms, and it's all in this area, which is absolutely gorgeous and, uh, one of the main reasons that I moved to this area. So, uh, maybe you guys can answer that. I don't know if there's a benefit for a resident here within our taxes or energy. I don't know. Is this just for private use or?
That's not, that's not for us to say. The reason we, as a planning commission, have, have a zoning ordinance for solar and have made a lot of amendments to it that we'll have the public hearing about is it's our responsibility to provide parameters, okay? We are still a private property state, okay? We do need to, as planning commission members, our responsibility is to look out for the general welfare and do what we can within both the state law, federal law, and what is reasonable, okay? And so I can't answer, neither should any of us here, um, on the commission, answer your question directly. It's not for us to.
So the public hearing, what, what is the public hearing for?
The public hearing will be directly related to the proposed zoning amendments that we've been working on for the past six months, and so, um, they will be published before the public hearing.
So basically, this has been approved?
No.
Okay.
The process is the planning commission works and we have, we have open meetings and we take public comment, and we receive lots of comments, both verbally, by email, in print, written, y'all have written letters to the editors, pro and con, and, um, then we have proposed amendments to our zoning ordinance to resolve and refine some issues. Those will be published on our website, and the public hearing is the opportunity for the public to, having read those proposals, comment on them. Then the planning commission sends the proposal, the proposed amendment, to the township board. The township board actually makes the official approval. Then they go into effect seven days after they're published.
Yeah, and, and the, the planning commission only sends them to the township board if the planning commission feels satisfied and thinks that it's the best we should do.
I just, I just want to have one question. So basically, us as a resident, we don't have any, we don't have any type of say-so in whether this happens or not. That's what you're telling us?
No, I'm not telling you that verbatim, okay? There is.
Is he on the list somewhere?
Yeah, get on the list and we'll talk about it later. Okay. Hang on, hang on. We have to go in order or. We have to go in order or we can't have chaos just in people.
That's, yes. Melissa Lawrence?
Thank you so much and thank you, everybody. And thank you for all the hard work you did on the amendments. I was at the meeting yesterday. One of the biggest things that everyone has been requesting is that you honor the master plan for the township. And yesterday, in the amendments, you did introduce a five percent cap in total acreage for solar, for industrial scale solar in the township, which equates to 500 acres. It's far too much. We've asked all along as residents and as your representatives of us to please integrate this industrial scale or utility scale solar, not let it dominate our landscape. Montague's is 170 acres. We all know what it looks like. We all know what it's done. We all know the problems we have come along with it. And to put 500 acres in a township that is half the normal size does not make sense. It doesn't align with our master plan. If you took our master plan as the bible, which it is, if you follow it, we are not in trouble. If you don't follow it, it's the reason why this room is packed today. So I urge you to follow it, please. There is a website that I shared with you. It's Consumers Power. It's Consumers Power Solar and Landowners is the name. Consumers has stated clearly in there, and I quote, "Less than 2% of Michigan farmland will be needed to achieve our renewable energy goals." That is directly from consumers. I urge you to stick with 2%, which is the full 2%, not less than 2%, which equates to 80 acres of our farmland for the township. So along with that, there wasn't no, any amendments on farmland that said generally prime farmland can't be used. Generally, to me, is just a suggestion. And anybody comes, that comes in as a developer or solar company, generally goes right out the window. If it says prime farmland cannot be used, to me, that is legally defensible. But Cliff would know more about that than me, but I just want to bring that into question. I also want to make one last mention before I stop. You have a study that was handed out to you on the Rhode Island study from University of Rhode Island for Housing Values. After that was presented at the Farmers Forum, I did reach out to one of the co-writers of that study, Cory Lang, because I wanted to ask him exactly how many homes were along the arrays that were studied in Rhode Island. This array would have over 80 homes on the edge of it, not within a quarter mile, not within a mile, riding right on the edge of the solar array. I don't know if there's anything that is comparable in any of these housing value studies. Cory's response to me was that there have been changes that have been made since this was written. So it's going through another round of peer reviews. So he was not comfortable with speaking with me about it or answering my questions. So you just need to know that when you read that. There are updates. They could be better, they could be worse. But he was reticent to share anything with me. Thank you.
Bill Dinty?
All right. Let's share some data. So thanks for having me here today. I am a White River Township resident and as a resident. But I'm also an engineer, an advocate for the environment. But I also believe in balancing property rights along with that, as well as Melissa just mentioned, our pastoral setting outlined in our master plan. So I propose, based on my research, which I'm sharing with you guys, between 36 to 80 combined acres for renewable energy projects based on that. And I'm going to give you the sourcing for that, since you guys have that. For a maximum size, I propose we align with the state of Michigan's renewable energy goals as well as those calculated by Consumers Energy. And this is all public information. On April 21st of 2022, the Michigan Department of Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy, what you hear called Eagle, released the Michigan Healthy Climate Plan. And I'm going to give you the source for that. And everybody, encourage you to look at it. It's actually pretty interesting. The plan sets forth a goal to generate 60% of the state's electricity from renewable sources by 2030. Let's align White River's ordinance with the state of Michigan and set a maximum acreage for White River Township according to electrical needs of the township. 60% of White River Township electrical needs is approximately 36 acres of renewable energy, including industrial utility solar. The calculation is based on data from Indiana and Michigan Power, which is, I also provide that as well. Consumers Energy expects to meet solar energy targets, and Melissa, a little bit of my thunder on that, and that's okay, using less than 2% of the farmland in Michigan, which equates to approximately 80 acres within our township. All right? So therefore, you see the 36 to 80 acres. Therefore, I propose 36 to 80 acres for combined renewable energy that aligns with our township's master plan of the state of Michigan and Consumers Energy's renewable energy goals for the size of our township, with the caveat that the environmental controls, along with escrow and security bonds and property value protections are in place. And thank you guys very much. And I will email a copy of this tomorrow with the sources.
Chris Rogers?
Hi there. Thank you for all your work you've done thus far. I really hope in that ordinance that you have there, that everything in there is looked out for the majority as you all represent us in our township. Not the few, not corporate bullies. This is the majority. I hope that in there is standing up for us. 500 acres is still going to affect a ton of people that are going to be living right along that. We're in it as a group. We're looking out for each other. And I hope you're doing that for us as well. Thank you.
Okay, Scott Jones and Jessica Jones?
We have no comment at this time.
Okay. And, oh my God. I think it's Guev.
Grieve.
Grieve.
No comment.
Okay. Dale Minus? Dale, from Shelby?
He left.
Oh. Mark O'Haynes?
I have a sore throat, so I apologize. We're down there below. I've been wearing a mask because of it. I'm deeply ashamed of my fellow citizens in White River Township and the decisions being made by their leaders. I poured my life into this township for over 60 years, caring for the land that my children now own. But I see neighbors asking to take away land rights from the farmers who wish to lease part of their land. Asking for unreasonable setbacks is nothing more than seizing your neighbor's property for your own visual pleasure. But I'm also ashamed because my fellow citizens won't recognize the larger benefit of the solar ray presented to the township over three months ago. When the yo-yo weather comes to us more viciously with killing heat, torrents of rain, or roof-stealing winds, when the climate change hits us harder in the coming decades, or even now, can you look at yourself and say, "We did our best to avoid this"? Or will you admit to delaying months and months in the face of the climate crisis? I'm also grieving that our township is willing to accept recreational facilities in the wider community and even a lovely minor park funded by the county. Yet they dare to claim that this project is wrong because it doesn't give power directly to us and nobody else. What a self-centered view of the world. Others are sharing with us, but we won't give any clean electricity to others. We owe ourselves in the world something better than that. We receive for the next quarter century a guarantee of quiet neighbors. We keep our view of the sunsets or the dark sky for student with stars at night. All we have to do is allow the farmers to lease their land, providing cleaner power to the wired grid, doing our small part to mitigate fossil fuel pollution and affirming our hope in the future. Finally, I'm shocked by the fear-mongering misinformation I've seen run around to scare neighbors rather than educate them on the true benefits of this project. I had expected better of my fellow citizens and their representatives. I am truly ashamed.
Tyrell Klein?
I'll wait for the next meeting.
Gary and Karen Ingersoll?
We'll wait for the April meeting as well.
Okay. Chris and Robin Krenn?
We have no comment.
Jim Luttrell?
Lisa Luttrell.
Lisa, oh, thank you.
I want to second many of the feelings of many of people in this room, of the amount of acreage that this is going to take our township and the beauty that this is going to take away from our township. And I'm concerned for our kids and our community and all the land around us.
I do have one question. You said that the amendments are going to be published online on the township website before the public hearing. Will you have a date by which they will be published? How many days before the meeting should we be able to find them?
Well, when it goes in the paper, it should be ready. So when you see it in the paper, it should be online. But, you know, check every once in a while. It shouldn't take that long for them to wordsmith that document. But we don't know what they're doing. So how long will it take? I don't know.
It will be, there is a legal requirement for a number of days prior to a public hearing that must be published. What is that? Fifteen. So it won't be any later than April 3rd.
Thanks.
Nestor McCaras?
Yeah. I'm just here to get educated on it right now, and I'll reserve to the next meeting.
Bill Boquist?
I just have a question. With respect to the comment that was made earlier where the person was asking whether or not the solar ordinance amendment would be in compliance with the master plan? I'm struggling to understand how it could not be in compliance with the master plan or what the purpose of the master plan will be if you can propose amendments that are not in compliance with it. Is there any way you can speak to that?
I don't know if this is to your satisfaction or not. And the master plan is a guidebook. The zoning ordinance is specific, okay? Our master plan is very old, which is why we were, we are in still in the process of revising that master plan. And there'll be a whole series of public meetings about that too, when we get to that. However, we were put in a situation where we needed to look at the zoning ordinance for solar after what happened in, we had a pretty tight zoning ordinance for solar. And then Montague Township had an unfortunate experience. So what you're asking is how could it not? I mean, again, the master plan is a guidebook. The zoning ordinance is the specific. That's a rule of law. We are, we try our best to match them up. However, again, we are a private property country. And there are certain rights. And we must be very careful about exclusionary zoning. And so it is not as cut and dry. And it's not up to so much individual interpretation as it is general interpretation. It's not a satisfactory answer.
One follow-up question. Once the solar ordinance amendment update is complete, does it have the effect of law? Or is it subject to challenge in court still?
All zoning ordinances at all times are subject to challenges in court. The process is if the zoning ordinance says that you need a special use permit, then you go through a site plan review and meet all the applicant, I'll say applicant, okay? Whether it's a property owner or somebody acting on behalf of the property owner. The applicant has to meet certain criteria. That's reviewed by the planning commission. And sometimes the planning commission has to hire consultants, engineers, experts to help evaluate the site plan application, the special use application. Then there is a public hearing about that. The planning commission can approve or disapprove. If the planning commission approves a special land use, then it goes to township board, I think, for final. Then the township board has to adopt it as well. So the planning commission is intermediary. Once, if the planning commission denies a special land use, then the applicant can go to the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals has the final say within the township. If the, if the zoning board of appeals denies the applicant, then the applicant goes to court if they want to go through with it. So yes, in this state, anything can be adjudicated when it comes to land use. Is that clear enough? I talked slow because I was thinking at the same time.
Okay. Is it Parry Rinders, Rinders?
No comment.
Tim Branks?
No comment.
Len Junwick? Is it Amy Junwick?
Arnie.
Arnie, sorry. Arnie?
The only way I could speak to that, please jump in if I'm wrong, is that there would, to put something like this on the ballot, I think there would need to be a petition for a ballot proposal raised. And even then, we are talking about individual property rights. And so I don't know the legalities of if a ballot proposal can address that significant of an action. Old 99, a paving of it or something?
Right.
Okay, that is, that is a joint property. So it was probably a ballot proposal on how to pay for it and who was going to pay for it. Okay. It's a different, different situation. Okay.
William Smeetchy?
Yeah. My wife and I grew up here. We just moved back about 10 months ago, February. And I think growing up here, we knew this was zone township. We knew it was the master plan. And so I think not just us, but I think everybody had certain beliefs that. And so I think not just us, but I think everybody had certain beliefs that being zoned is up there, certain protections for each, the entire community. And with that in mind, you know, I couldn't just go and do something on my own that would harm others, and I would expect to say that the rights or the wants of one or a few shouldn't trump the needs of the entire broader community. So with that in mind, thinking one or two percent cap, something like that would probably make sense. I'm sympathetic for the landlords and to the need for pursuing renewable energy sources. I think that's important. I'd also think if we get more reasonable, then finding a way to accommodate, there are plenty of places in the townships that have fewer roads, maybe a hill, a natural forest line, that type of stuff, where we could put in solar panels, and it really wouldn't be all that obvious. It wouldn't be the ISO, it wouldn't detract from the pastoral nature or the master plan at all. So I think there are ways to compromise, but 1,700 acres to me is really a lot of stuff.
And again, let me reiterate, we're talking about the zoning ordinance, we're not talking about any particular project, application, whatever at this moment.
That's what I give more to what the cap would be.
Paula Smith?
I'll just save my comments to ever review what you're proposing as a change. Thank you.
Kathy Hubbard?
No comment at this time.
Nick Ricci?
I'll talk on the 18, please.
Brooke Smith?
Oh, no, not now, I'm sorry.
Janelle Farkas?
What type of solar panels are these?
There, we are not specifying the brand or make in the solar zoning ordinance.
Not the brands, like the silicon or, do you know, even?
We are not specifying that in the zoning ordinance. We haven't in the past and in the proposed amendment. You're not.
Is there a reason why there's a thing in it?
Well, there is.
Because more of them are more hazardous than others.
And that is beyond the scope of a zoning ordinance. We could put in certain special conditions into a, into a review of any particular application. A partic, an individual application would have that information in it, and at that point in time, the planning commission would, would respond to it.
And be, I'll just jump in real quick. And because this is a, this ordinance falls under special use, it would be impossible to, to include every single detail when a year from now, technologies might be different and details would be different. And so that's why within this amendment, there are, there's language to bring in specialists if and when a proposal is brought to us for which this ordinance would apply.
Who chooses specialists?
So you're saying that you are taking, they may be silicon now, but in a year when you put them in, they might be a different size?
No, no, no. I'm saying that in, for us right now to list, to even begin to think about listing those technicalities of this type of panel would be allowed, but this type of panel wouldn't be allowed, might not even have any bearing three years from now on new panels that had been developed. And so that's why we don't specifically list them. That issue becomes something that's dealt with when an applicant comes to us.
Actually, it's always the older panels that are more hazardous. So like the panels we put in right now will actually be more hazardous than the panels that are going to be put in in five years. Because the panels they have right now have lead and, yeah.
When they supply an application, once this ordinance is approved, then the company would put forward an application for this. In that application, they would have to supply us a list of materials of what the makeup of those panels are going to be. And that's when we would hire somebody to review that on a professional basis to give us an idea whether that's a thumbs up or a thumbs down. That consultant would say, you don't want that stuff, and we would reject it. If they say yes, then we would probably approve it. So at that time, we would know what materials are going in.
And what type of stuff would make you want to reject it?
I'm sorry?
What type of stuff would make you want to reject it?
I'm not an engineer, I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
But it's not the hazardous, it would be the hazardous waste person that would make, it's not the engineer, because the engineer just wants the money.
No one's hired.
Come on, come on.
It's a hazardous waste test with soils and structures, you got to get in there and test the land.
I'll get into a lot of discussion. It would be an independent engineering for, you know, to come from these engineers.
That we would hire.
Okay.
Stay tuned, because a special use permit requires a public hearing and meetings. And so keep coming to meetings, and you'll be able to review any applications that permit.
Okay.
Do I have time to just read something?
You did. You had the time.
I did. Yeah, but I didn't, you guys were talking more. All right, I'll read it at the next meeting.
You want to add your name again?
What?
You want to add your name again, you can.
What is the, what is the, when does everyone vote?
They don't vote.
No one votes.
They don't vote.
You vote, I'll put my name on it, Jen.
Janelle, is there any further questions?
It says White Street, Montague, I don't know if that's in White River County. No, it says, I did, okay, I'm telling you. Okay, I just think that everybody's got, I wouldn't say that's a good question. Okay.
Mark Tore?
Can we turn the fans off?
Grab the water. Remember to charge the fire extinguisher. Remember to turn the fans off when you get the fire extinguisher out.
Tamara Hor?
Yes, I'll give this to you.
Okay, she's going to give me.
My name is Tamara Hor. I don't live in the township, but my viewpoint and expertise matter. Those of us who live in Whitehall, Montague, and the surrounding townships are a part of a larger community. We rely on each other for different things in the White Lake area. Some of us share schools, libraries, and emergency personnel. Others share the use of the senior center or Viking Athletic Center. Many of you might visit restaurants in Montague or Whitehall. I buy food from local farmers who live outside my city's limits or groceries at Montague Boots. Considering how much we rely on each other for goods, products, and services, it's troubling to hear the Township Planning Commission being so restrictive in your proposed amended solar ordinance. I've heard in recent reports that some residents only want to generate the equivalent electricity needed for those who live in your township. Some percentages have been thrown around in the past week, so I want to be clear that the state of Michigan has a goal of 100% renewable energy by 2050. So every municipality should not only have a plan for 60% by 2030, but 100% by 2050. Now, back to the idea of only producing what's needed by residents. You purposefully limit what White River farmers could supply to others in the White Lake area? Some homes in Whitehall and Montague won't be able to put solar panels on their roofs. The city of Whitehall doesn't have farmland to place solar panels. I and others may be dependent on White River farmers to produce affordable electricity if we cannot. We depend on each other in a community. Our municipalities collaborate. We all want to see a thriving community. Everyone in the White Lake area is depending on White River Township to make good decisions for the future of the area, not just those who live in your township limits. Thank you.
No comment.
Roy Burkholder?
I'm White River Township President on Trails End, not too far from here, and I want to thank the planning commission for the work they do. I'm glad that they have the limit to the proportion of land that can be allowed for the solar. I think that's just trying to keep balance between what seems appropriate for our community, still produces solar liquid. My concern is on whatever size lot they put the solar panels, I didn't see any limit to the percent coverage that the panels could cover. And I think that has a big effect on anything from erosion to runoff into the Pearson Dam. Any other improvement that's put on agricultural land has to cover no more than 20%. And these solar panels could almost be viewed like a huge roof. If the water hits it, it runs off, it doesn't soak in evenly. So am I, did I miss something? Is there a coverage, maximum coverage limit in?
Yes.
What is that limit? I know it was in the December 2019 at 20%.
No, that was, that was small scale.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, it was. One of the reasons is the proposal is going to look a bit different than the current is because it, the current one is a little bit harder to understand. Oh, the drawings, the drawings. You were here yesterday, you remember the drawings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm going to find it, because 80-acre map is what I'm thinking per, per parcel, and some parcels are really big.
I'm not talking about the acres, I'm talking about whatever.
You're talking about the percentage.
Yes, the lot coverage. That's how it's turned for any other improvement to make sure there's enough space where there's a part of the lot. That the land can afford that.
Yeah, that is in residential areas, okay? There's, there's no residential zones.
No, but in the, this is the half page that you had back in December 2019, it had the 20% maximum lot coverage there.
Yeah, that is not today.
Right.
Right.
Well, I'm saying that's what concerns me. You had a good.
All right.
I think anything from runoff, erosion, if this plan ever was removed back to, thank you, at the end of 20 years, I think we've got to hear from those periodists during the construction.
Yes, and that is, that is provided for in this. And when you get a chance to read the proposals before the public hearing, I think you'll have a better understanding. I know I will, because I will have read it many times.
But you're telling me that there is a lot coverage limit for agricultural land for solar panels?
For solar energy systems, utility scale.
Okay.
Okay?
I didn't see that in the working section, so I'm glad it's somewhere.
Okay.
And did you say what it was then? Did you found that, what percentage?
It's not percentage, it's number of acres.
Then it's.
So it's different than for an individual homeowner or farm, an individual use solar system.
So you're saying whether it's limited acres, whatever, they could cover 100% coverage on that and not let the rain soak in the ground?
No. I'm not saying that, and that's not what the ordinance will read. So please, when the ordinance is ready, take a good look at it, okay?
I think they intend to definitely present cases.
Hopefully, it will be clearer in the proposed one than it is in the current one. Okay, next.
Okay, we're on page three, everybody. There's no page four. Okay, Marjorie Erdman?
I would like to use my time to the lady, my fire extinguisher.
That's a good one.
Thank you.
That's the lady later.
Yeah, please don't, please don't confuse that with her.
Okay, I am reading, I wrote this today, so I haven't like read it to anyone, so I'm sorry to my voice. It's basically just a bunch of facts about, that people don't know about solar panels. So to just give you a bunch of facts, so here you go. I'm here to talk about a few reasons why solar panels should not go in. Reasons such as waste, hazardous materials put into our ground, and child labor that takes, that it takes to build them.
Yes.
By the end of 2030, the.
I concur.
By the end of 2030, the US is expected to have as much as 100 million tons of solar panel waste. For comparison, in 2018, the total of the US solid waste was 292 million tons. Did I say 100 million tons? I hope I did. 292 million tons. According to Harvard Business Review, solar panels are getting replaced earlier than expected. Once they are expected to get replaced, 25 years. The International Renewable Energy Agency states if, if early replaced, if early replacements occur as predicted, they could produce 50 times more waste in just four years. It costs 10 to 30 times more to recycle panels than to send them to a landfill, and in turn, that's why it ends up happening. Solar panels will start clogging our landfills since producers will never lobby for any kind of legislation to recycle them properly. This will never happen because this will increase solar panel money, and companies will end up going bankrupt. A major new study of the economics of solar panels published in Harvard Business Review said that waste produced by solar panels will make electricity from the solar panels four times more expensive. Because of this, the world's leading energy analysis stated that the economics of solar is the industry will sink under the weight of its own trash. Solar panels are very hazardous because they hold hazardous waste like lead and, I might say this wrong, cadmium. These substances, these substances are both hazardous to the human body and Earth at high levels. To give you an example of how hazardous the produce, they produce 300 times more waste than nuclear waste.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm almost done, can I finish?
In attending these meetings, it has become clear to me.
In attending these meetings, it has become clear to me, in reading pieces and body language, and also knowing what some zoning and township board members have to lose with this massive solar proposal on the table, that there is more play here than this did I. 2019 has not served the township well in its ordinance changes. That happens now in the years, but most of the damage serious did not. Otherwise, why, one of these three township and zoning board members will be looking at these solar panels in chain link fence, along with family members who will be surrounded by the panels in chain link fence? Why? Why wouldn't you minimize the cap for utility solar to be in favor of the master plan and protect yourselves, your family, and White River Township? I can only hope that you see the importance of minimizing this utility solar ordinance to 2% of White River Township farmland, which creates 8 acres in total. Another concern I have is a 100-foot setback at streams, it was written yesterday's meeting. Currently stated in the ordinance, I understand that this is talking about Pearson Dam?
Pearson Drain.
That is not enough. In the implementation of clearing the land, putting the solar panels in, erecting fencing, and adding burns, the streams of waterways will be decimated, and then to us, the streams of waterways to take on extra water will be running low. I ask you to make the setback at least 600 feet for waterways and streams.
Dave Hyten, 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 on Chandler Drive? Dave on Chandler? Lauren Wacarago?
I'm not ready to talk yet.
Okay. Is it Brandon Mills?
Miller.
Miller?
That's me. Yeah, sorry, trying to bump anybody. My name is Brandon Miller with the Land Liberty Coalition. I'm here speaking on behalf of the landowners of the project. Some are here today, some are not. Regardless, I'm here to speak on their behalf and to clear up some of the misconceptions around the solar. One thing in particular I wanted to bring up, is I did bring up Rhode Island study. Reason I bring up Rhode Island study is the opposition members have said that the Rhode Island study indicates a massive decline in property values if solar panels go in. The study does not indicate that in any populations with any population density of under 450 per square mile. White River Township is well below that limit. Now, in regards to this, regards to study being under peer review for different changes, we don't know, but I'm more than happy to provide even more studies that indicate there is no property valuation decreases that actually will apply to more places in the Midwest as well. Coen Resnick has done several studies, I'm more than happy to provide those to the township as well. The reason this study is critically important is because you guys have setbacks every set at 600 feet. 600 feet is an arbitrary number. The only number that this came from is from that study that stated that there is population that was a property valuation loss within one-fifth of a mile. That's where the 600 number came from. That 600 number is incorrect. I would ask you guys to reconsider that number. And I'd also ask the audience to consider this. A setback is the determined number in which your neighbor owns your land. Would everyone in this room be okay if your neighbor owned 600 feet of your land? Let's say the farmer had a farm next to your home, and you had a tree 600 feet within that property. Should that farmer have the right to say, "That tree should go down because it could impact my farming"? Of course not. That'd be ridiculous. We live in a country that believes in private property. That's been said multiple times. There's two ways that property rights are distributed in the world. There's one in which there's community private, community property, that's something such as countries such as China, the former Soviet Union. Then there's places like the United States that believes in personal property rights, that believes you should do with your land what you please. I do find it quite interesting as well, that many peoples, at the previous meeting, we today talked about moving up to these communities, probably living on the same prime farmland they're trying to protect. Keep this in mind. If you want to stay consistent with your master plan, supposedly, which the Great Farm Act in the state of Pennsylvania and PA 116 does suggest that solar is compatible with agricultural use. But, you could consider other options, such as banning the purchases and building a new home to the township to protect the prime farmland. You could consider banning new structures on areas that could be considered prime farmland. But we all know, the issue is not prime farmland, it's about restricting this particular project. Finally, I wanted to point out another fact. You guys listed DVA requirements at 45 decibels. I am speaking at louder than 45 decibels. A 40-decibel limit is a library, a quiet library at that. A 50-decibel is a refrigerator. Everybody in this room would probably be broken and lost.
Next, we have Ken Jacobson?
So, I'm a property owner. We actually bought some property on Lost Valley to build a retirement home. My wife's family has a cottage in Radiance, so we've been coming here for a number of years. Just to kind of follow up on what this gentleman was saying, the main issue here is that we're talking about agricultural lands, and according to the Oxford Dictionary, agriculture is the cultivation of soil for the growing of crops and the rearing of animals to provide food, wool, and other products. This is, this is industry, this isn't agriculture. Some townships have actually limited this to their industrial zone areas. I'm not saying that that's right or wrong, I'm in favor of green energy. I think we have a big problem with global warming in this world. It's a question of what's appropriate. Is it appropriate to cover up our farmlands when we're having problems with food supplies and raising costs? You know, we talk about private property rights. Yeah, we have private property rights, but that's what zoning does, is control. When you buy that property, you know how it's zoned. It was zoned for agriculture.
Exactly.
So, I have a couple of questions about the ordinance, because I haven't seen it. Does it require fencing?
Yes.
Okay. I have a study that was done in Wyoming about the effects on deer, elk, and promhomer antelope with the fencing of these large solar arrays. I will send a link, so you can look at it. There's a big problem, and I'm sure this is a big whitetail hunting area, okay?
I wish we have fewer deer that hit on the road. You always do something about that, I'm sure.
Yeah, so that's an interesting point, because in Wyoming, they had a problem with the promhomer antelope during the snowstorm. They got stuck in the right of way of the road because of the solar, fenced solar array. Okay, so it's gonna change wildlife patterns. I read something about environmental assessment. Was, was there something done, and is that available?
There, there are various references to different aspects of an environmental assessment and...
I'm not talking about official environmental assessment, but I thought it was like the contract company talking here, so they did some sort of environmental assessment.
I don't know what, I can't speak to anything that, I don't know who you're talking about per se, but the zoning ordinance has certain elements that, in the conglomerate, cover an environmental impact.
So, that really should be looked at before any special use is kind of permitted, is what the effects going to have on wildlife and migration. In Wyoming, they've actually broke up the solar installations to make them smaller with corridors between them?
And if, I believe we have accounted for that.
Okay.
So, when you get a chance to look at...
I only got three minutes, I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Does the ordinance cover the decommission? Because I know that's been a problem in certain areas.
Yes.
Does it cover, because I know in certain solar areas, they've also had problems where they do not remove the broken panels, they just have big piles of them on the property.
That's covered.
Can I ask one more question? Do you define, do you define the ground cover and stuff like that as like native Michigan plants and species?
We, we, it is addressed. So, again, you'll be able to read them. Okay. Thank you. Liz Hedges?
Hi, my name's Liz Hedges, and I live in White River Township. Thank you so much for all of your hard work and all your time. I know this isn't easy, but I know that we can all be civil and not shame anybody. So, I would like to ask a question to those that are here. If you're a White River Township resident and support a 2% cap or 80 acres on the farmland, can you please stand up and raise your hand, and keep your hands raised till we get a count? Joel will count for us. And then I would like the total number count recorded in the meeting minutes of the...
We got one more here that's sitting down.
Okay, so, 91 total.
Also, I support the 600 setbacks on all the property lines and waterways, please.
Chelsea Bender?
Hi, my name's Chelsea Bender. I am a White River Township resident. I moved here about a year and a half ago. That coming back was very exciting. We were really excited to be able to have, you know, to be able to have a small hobby farm. I appreciate your hard work that you guys have done. I appreciate the 600-foot setback. I do agree that there should be a smaller maximum. I think that when I go and look at what they have in Montague Township, that it is sad. At the same time, I do think that we do need to be reaching renewable energy goals. Some of those, I think, are going to be met in different ways in the next 10 years. I think it's going to become more affordable for us to have them on our house. I know we have a nice south-facing roof that one day would be great to have them on, but we also have to be able to afford to be able to buy it. So, I think that when it comes to renewable energy, renewable energy needs to come in many forms, and we need to consider our township, and some of the goals that we have with the master plan. I know the master plan is a guide, but a, that is a guide as well. And then renewable energy needs to come in many other different forms. And for us, for some that might not live in White River Township that has the ability to farmland, we have to find other opportunities. And so, if we are going to make goals with the state, or the state has goals of having 100% by 2050, that's a great goal, and we can already meet that with our township with a maximum, and be able to have, meeting our township's goals. And then other things can happen as we move forward, but we all know technology will change. And I think as technology is changing, we will be able to adapt as a township, and that we can reevaluate year, no, not year after year, I know you guys do not want to do that, but we can reevaluate every 10 years and see, or however many, I don't know how often you guys do it, but taking a look at that. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, I've got Ed DeYoung. No, I'm sorry, I, I, oh, you know what, I'll just go back, it's okay. Go ahead, go ahead, Ed.
I'm Ed DeYoung, I'm a property owner, I've been since the 70s. A couple of things that I wanted to point out, I'm in, in favor of sustainable energy, but I'm opposed to this project. The Macbeth Solar Farm has 170 acres, and they say it provides enough energy for 3,400 homes for a year. The number of households in Whitehall and Montague is 2,063, according to Google. I think it's a pretty nice start, and it's a good thing. But I would like to promote some other things. Brownfield Zones, I don't know if we have any in this township or not. Excellent place for solar panels. For instance, I can keep at the cow plant across the street from it, they put all this fly ash in, they got a huge area, they got a chain link fence around it. They have all the utilities coming to that point. Put them in, that's what we need. We need that, the solar. Also, I think we ought to encourage it for roofs, for commercial and residential areas. It can also be used for canopies over parking areas, and over and above this 2%. I think 2% is very reasonable, based on what I've discovered. Thank you.
And Pam Watson? John Deegan?
John Deegan, 8240 Leonard Park Road, my drop each little thing, see if you can read. I am also a landowner, in favor of the solar project, but I think you're trying to limit my rights as a property owner. And when you refer this to our farm ground, I have to correct you, because it is not our farm ground, it is my farm ground. So, is the moratorium still in place? Is some of that stuff that we discussed tonight, or you discussed, is a conflict of interest on the moratorium? Okay? What is the capacity of this building? I would ask next time, you exceed, no, exceed here.
John, I will, I will contact our insurance.
Oh, because I'm gonna contact the fire department next time.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Somebody already called the fire department.
Tonight?
Yeah, they called them, but they must not have come out.
No, we, this is, John, are you still got your three minutes going, or are you done? Are, are you done? You have three minutes?
Oh, no, you don't have enough time for me.
Oh, so you're done for now? Okay, thank you. This is very nicely done, John, thank you. And, yeah, I do want, I mean, this is, the capacity of this building is something we should all be concerned about, because I'm looking forward to you all staying involved in township doings. So, if you all want to pass, get a petition going to build a bigger community hall or something, great. Well, it's not hard. Okay, we've got to go back to our list, sorry. Lori Coleman?
Good evening, Lori Coleman, City of Montague. There are so many good things associated with the solar project out in White River Township. We've not been hearing much about the positive. White River Township will be generating clean, renewable energy from the sun, serving the energy needs of our community and state. This is something to be proud of. It will be setting an example that our community is forward-thinking and visionary. We understand we must move toward a new future and plan for a healthy, safe environment for generations to come. It will allow landowners who have farmed these fields for generations to keep the land in their family. They own and work the land for us, for our food needs. They do not own and work the land. They do not own and work the land to provide a pleasant view for their neighbors. This project will provide them with financial security to continue producing crops. They will be able to have that pension or that 401K that so many of us enjoy. The solar project will protect the land for the next 25 years. It will rest and replenish the soil. It will quietly protect the land and the air that we breathe. Oh, excuse me, I have one last thing. Everybody who supports renewable energy, and the reason why we're here is this report from the UN on climate change.
Okay, thank you. Brian Brinker?
Thank you. Hey. My son goes to Whitehall, but we just moved to Montague here a couple of years ago. We just built a house on Lake Shore. And also a real estate broker. And my question is, you know, the commercial use versus residential use. I also have solar in my house. I spent $30,000. I got a 25% tax incentive and I saved like 50 bucks a month. I was told 150 bucks a month. But anyway, besides all of that, I wouldn't go that route again. But my thing is this commercial versus residential use. Our homes are residents and farms, not businesses. This is not personally used. This scale of solar is commercially used, not residential used. We should have an ordinance in use in place, I believe, versus selling a mass production versus someone using it for their personal use. Farms are zone AG, not for solar power. This is not a farm production. This is a power plant that we're talking about. And this is about our, our house values. It's looking at all of us here. If we, how many of us would actually buy a house in the middle of 740,000 solar panels? Would you wait a minute? And then another thing is, my property values will decrease. I've been in real estate for almost 20 years. I know what sells, I know what sells farmland and waterfront, commercial property, all of that. So I'm just saying, I'm prepared to lose about 25% of my property value. And that's probably low. So I'm just going to ask the assessor if we have one around here. Are they willing to adjust the assessment value of our housing? And then the next one is, I'll leave that at that. But I, I am a solar advocate. Renewable energy 100%. I think we just need a balance, you know? And I think the 740,000 is just overkill, to be honest with you. 80 to 100 acres or something like that, I think, would actually be great for our community and we can play our part in that role of what these ladies are talking about, about giving back. If it actually helped our residents versus somebody else in another part of the state, it would help if it would help us. But I also feel for the farmers because I do believe in private property rights 100%. And so it's kind of a mixed bag, per se. And I also want to say thank you guys for all of you. When we built our house here, you guys are phenomenal. All you guys are very nice and you look out for the community and I know you do that. And so I just want to commend you guys and sorry you got to be put in this type of position. So thank you.
Thank you. Nick Todd?
Hello, everybody. My name is Nick Todd. I've been stewing on an issue that's been chewing on my brain for quite a while. So I had surgery in between when the solar company came in and gave us our initial, this is what we're going to do till now. I've heard everybody's reasons from the birds and the bees to the, to the people, to the residents. I live across the street. I'm going to be surrounded by everything. So I've got just as much to lose as everybody else does. At that meeting, the solar panel company said that there's going to be approximately 50 to 70 inversion stations scattered throughout this nine mile, square mile project, okay? 50 to 70 inversion stations. Each inversion station is going to be like the size of a tonnage. These inversion stations take the power from solar, convert it into consumer energy's grid. Not one person so far has, at least from my perspective, spoke up. That's 50 to 70 security cameras in our neighborhood. Every single converter station is going to have a lock gate control, a control lock gate and a security camera. 24/7, 365. Every single landowner will have security cameras facing their property. Think about that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So your right to, your right to sell your land and do what you want, your right to defend these guys and what they have. That's bullshit that they have the right to watch me 24 hours a day, 365 a day a year. That's bullshit.
Okay, this is the last one. Chuck England?
Hi, I'm Chuck England. I just lived down the road on Post here. It's like my third or fourth meeting. I spoke to everyone, so I just got one question that, my wife went to the meeting yesterday afternoon. I had to work. She, she, now, I don't know if this is true or not, but she said that, I just got a question. The farmers, are they allowed to grow whatever they want? Are they allowed to sustain themselves, to make a profit? Or are they being told what to grow that's, that's going to put them in the red? By the township. Are they, are they allowed to grow whatever they want?
As long as it's legal.
You know, because I, I mean, because I'm thinking about them too. Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, the, the private property thing, the right to do, you know, whatever you want. I just, are they, they're allowed to grow whatever they want? Are they, are they told that they have to grow certain things? Open, no restrictions are?
I think that that would come from the Food and Drug Administration. If there was any resurgence, is John still here?
I just want to know if they're allowed to grow, grow stuff that's going to make them a profit, that's not going to put them in the red? Or are they being told to?
Oh, yes.
And I'm against the project. That's why we, you know, it's like, we've only lived here for four years. That's why we, we love the area because, like everybody says, you know, because in the summertime, the springtime, the farm area. Yeah, obviously, it's a financial grip. So I just wanted to.
Okay, we are at, we have a few more that signed in. So Joel Smith?
Joel Smith, White River Township resident. So there's been a few comments made about exclusionary zoning. And I have a couple of changes that I'd like to propose to the ordinance to speak specifically to the defense of exclusionary zoning and how to, to help specify. So I'm suggesting that in subsection 1606 MM, we add two clarifying statements. The special land use shall demonstrate need beyond mere convenience to the residents of the community in the township or surrounding area. And the special land use shall specify how the location is appropriate and well suited. These are two of the rules or the, yeah, two of the rules that are used to define if something is exclusionary or not. So referencing the first one, require a special land use permit applicant to prove that residents of White River Township do not have adequate access to the use and can only obtain the required item by the addition of their proposed special land use. Therefore, not specifying it to a certain project. For instance, in the 2017 decision of Tuscola Wind, Wind 3 LLC versus Ulmer Charter Township, the Honorable Thomas Luddington of the US District East Court ruled in favor of the township stating, Tuscola cannot reasonably argue that the township will have inadequate access to energy absent the wind energy project. The Michigan Court of Appeals has explained that to show demonstrated public needs, the plaintiff must do more than show residents of the township would benefit from the excluded use. Tuscola has not carried the burden here. And that's something I would ask that we put in the ordinance, that there has to be a demonstrated need that's beyond mere, mere convenience. Secondly, I said this holds true for industrial solar in White River Township as well. There is no need for access to additional energy sources in the township. I think 2% is a great cap. I think that we have, we have legal support to go less than that. Item two, require any special land use applicant to specify how the proposed special land use is appropriate and well suited in the chosen location. White River Township is among the poorest locations in the country for solar irradiation. The national solar factor is 24.5%, according to ANR, which is a government agency. West Michigan receives no more than 3.5 hours of sun per day, or 14.5% solar factor. And more specifically, data from NASA shows that White River Township specifically here is under 11%. So well below national average. When I looked up the top 53 largest cities in the United States, Michigan is ranked, Grand Rapids, excuse me, is ranked 52 out of 53 for the least amount of solar. Only Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania is rated lower.
Okay, Lauren Walker-Nagle?
Thank you for all your work. I support the 600, I'd like to say I support the 600 foot setbacks. While it was turned in, the article from Rhode Island, and it was one tenth of a mile. And then later it brought up that it was for residential only. I did more research, you know, the picture on the front of that study doesn't have any houses around that residential. And so I started looking into other studies. And the University of Texas study did show the average number of houses in the rural area. It was one house. So we're, yeah, like 75, 80 houses. And I'd just like to show this picture in red here. There's one thing that you don't see, this is the proposed project. You don't see houses in the middle. That's where we live, right in the middle. So it's not on the edge. It's in the middle. And so I do, I support the 600 acres, I mean, I'm sorry, 600 feet setback. And I'd like to also say that there are more studies, more recent, that talk about greater property declines even within a quarter mile. And the most recent Berkeley study says that the adverse property value impacts homes closer to the array and primarily those in rural agricultural settings around larger projects. So it's really important that we set the size of this to the right for our township. Now, a lot of townships are putting the ordinances in industrial areas. We know we don't have that. We have contamination it ignores. We have, we have dunes that we need to protect. We don't have the space that these other townships have. And so I'd like to say that we go with the 2% that are consumers and the state of Michigan. And when we add that to Montague, we're covering Montague, White River Township, most of Whitehall. A lot, if we, if 500, I think we might even cover Fruitland Township. And so since industrial and commercial does not seem to be an option for us and we're half the size of a regular township, 500 acres is too excessive. We should have a reasonable and specific maximum for acreage in our township. 500 acres does not align with the master plan. I'm for the property rights too, but I'm also for the property rights of neighbors. And that's what ordinances are for, to protect the neighbors. And so I ask you please to update the ordinance to reflect the will of the residents.
Okay, I think that's our last person. Susan Marvel?
I just have one question. I have a friend who is really upset that what we have in the solar panels in Montague. I live about four miles that direction or three miles. They, you're saying that these solar panels will help us, that they will keep us self-sufficient even for 25 years before they change them again, whatever. Bottom line, how much of the electricity that is produced by these solar panels stays in our area? And isn't such a concern? None at all. So if none of us, if none of this supports our community that is for the welfare of this community, why the heck are we having it here?
So are, are, people are saying none of it stays. Are you saying that none of it stays? Great, just like a coal-fired plant, that doesn't just serve the community around a coal-fired plant. So it really isn't necessarily going to affect our cost? But I understand you can save $50 a month.
Then $30,000 to save $50 a month.
Yeah. We already have shields up, so. That was it? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We'll second that.
I would like to say so. I've been here at White River for almost 70 years. My house is right over here. And your solar system's going to be great in my backyard. It doesn't, and her front yard. It doesn't benefit us. When we pay for it, we pay the taxes. It does benefit some of the farmers. But to me, I believe in the farming. I believe in the farmers. But if you can't do your farming or anything, sell your land, lease it to some farmers who will farm it. We do need farming. We do need that product. And for being told, shame on us. I've paid taxes for the drainage I did not want. And they destroy some of my property. Horrible. We had no problems with that drainage or anything. And if we put that solar in here, they're going to wreck our road here. And who's going to pay for that? I'm paying enough taxes on this. And we're the ones who's going to pay the taxes. And we're not going to benefit them. I'm sorry and I'm, thank you for what you guys do. But it's not fair that all of us are going to pay for the farmers who are going to benefit. If you, if you can't farm that land, then lease it. So if I was a business and my family didn't want to take over, like my brother, my sisters, whoever, I would have to sell it. I could do like what they're going to do and profit more and more. Live on what we live on. It's not very much, but I can live with that. Thank you.
Hey, Rose, what's your last name?
Rowan, R-O-A-N.